Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the city council meeting for Monday, April 7th, 2025, to order. At this time, we'll begin with prayer. Pastor Scott Graham, there he is, yep, from Real Life Church of Kankakee, will lead us in the prayer.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity that we have. I thank you that we are part of a city that believes in the power of prayer and starting a meeting even, where others may look at our city through and accuse other people of looking at it through rose-colored glasses. I thank you for a room full of vision, a room full of faith, hope, future, and I just ask that you would be a part of every single conversation, that it would not be of one single individual, but a group effort, and that everything would be for the greater good. I ask that you would be at the head of every table and that your light would shine bright and your light would shine bright through us. Have your way innocent through us. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for this meeting. We ask it all in your name. Amen.
City Council, allegiance and a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to public comment at this time. Please give your name and direct your comments to the mayor. Comments are limited to three minutes. No personal tax upon council members, staff, or other persons in attendance or absent will be permitted. In addition, discussions of matter which are currently under legal review will not be permitted. First up, we have Apostle Jones.
First, I want to say congratulations for the reelection for the mayor. It was a campaign that was running, I guess, very well the while, so I just want to congratulate you as mayor. Some of things, we have a committee from the families in focus from the community. We'll be here every meeting, so we're coming in every meeting. And so we're going to bring more as we continue to build because we're concerned about the city. The budget, new budget will be made. I spoke to you about that. If you was going to be mayor, Dr. Walter, you'd be the mayor. And you know the city budget, low-income families, that's how we get the money in. We appreciate what's happening on Hobby. They're moving pretty fast now. We glad that it's moving. We still have a lot of boarded-up homes, and I know I've been working with you, Mayor, on that, and I'm very concerned. You said you showed me that it's going to be a priority. How that budget looks, we're going to monitor it because if it's 40 million or 50 million. We have 40% of African-Americans in this city, 32 whites, and 25% Hispanic. We saw a lot of buildings are not surely divided. We want to see representatives on the various committees. When we had that forum, Mayor, that was some of the question that was raised. How would the community represent the city? Since we have home rule, that means you all make all the decisions, and so you all need to be accountable for all the decisions because it affects us as residents. That's the importance of the home rule. So we want to make sure that if there's a bid, we seen a lot of bids going forth because we see a lot of buildings and houses, but with the home rule, you don't necessarily have to have it in the newspaper. Two or three people come together and there go up a building. We want to see that progress or the process. We want to have representatives. As we continue, we're going to look at the budget from the community perspective since we're 40% of the population here in Kankakee. It almost looks like we're 2% of the population because of local license being passed in the community. Where I'm at, that'll never happen. I'm with everybody at Kennedy School, where all these local licenses, all these things are being passed within the African-American community. There needs to be a paradigm shift, and I appreciate your position, but if the position is biased, we need to look at that overall. As we mobilize the community more and more, there needs to be a little bit more accountability in the sense of how that money is distributed, distributed because of the low-income families. If there's high crime, there's more money comes to the city. There's more police officers hired. So some who are on the line, we don't have anything for the juveniles based on substance abuse. There's no program. Mantino left five years ago with the program, five years ago with other programs. There's nothing to rein in. They don't have a program. Mayor, I spoke to you. We had us a question for the mayor and Dr. Walters because, again, the police officer can't do much because there's nowhere to take these young people. And since no one has legalized now, we got a lot of these children doing gannies. So we want to have an increase in drug, but yet we have nothing for the children. So hopefully, Mayor, city council members, hopefully we're able to do better. You got four more years, Mayor, so we're going to see what happens within those four years. Thank you.
Next up is Mrs. Varete.
My name is Erling Varete. I live at 355 South Greenwood. There's a house that's been boarded up for 30 years across from me, and I am tired of looking at that house, so I would like to have someone, something done about that. There's a lot of raccoons in the area, in the house, and it just needs to go.
We'll move on to item five. Roll call, city council.
Jones.
Present.
Noble.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Cobb.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Navarez.
Here.
Marzak.
Present.
Swanson.
President.
Polly.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Malone Marshall.
Present.
Rude.
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
We do have a quorum. Department heads?
Kidwell.
Here.
Roche.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Kubel.
Present.
Landwehr.
Present.
Taylor.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Newton.
Here.
Pigash.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Easley.
Here.
King.
Here.
Roswell.
Rua Watson.
Thank you.
Next up is the minutes from Monday, March 17th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
A motion from Alderman Tully. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Marzak. Is there any questions, comments, additions, or changes to the minutes? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Polly.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Barron. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Barron. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Polly.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Barron. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman O'Brien. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Polly.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved.
I have a motion from Alderman Barron. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman O'Brien. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Polly.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Barron. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman O'Brien. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Polly.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
The ordinance is approved. Next is item 7B.
PB 2025-3-1, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a landscape contractor shop, including an outdoor storage yard located at 1192 South Washington Avenue in Kankakee.
Director King, is there anything you would like to further elaborate on this part?
I mean, I can just mention that there were quite a few conditions on this that included requiring the area where they're storing things to be fenced in. There's restrictions on hours of operation, also deliveries, how often trucks can come and go off to the property, and then also there was an additional condition added by the planning board about leaving a, removing a nuisance tree but leaving a portion of it still on the property for decorative purposes.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman O'Brien. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Barron. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Polly.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next, we're moving on to item eight, and that is communications. There is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of them. Is it the desire of the council to combine those tonight, or do you want to?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Rude to combine items 8A through H. Is there a second?
Second, but Mayor, on a few of them, I have requested changes on the items E, F, and G.
Let's do this. Let's, before we make those changes, let's have the clerk read them into the minutes as they are, and if you can make the changes. Thank you.
Item A, Good Vibrations Restaurant and Bars, requesting street closure of South Cannon Avenue on the side of the business between Station Street and the alley to host the ride, writing for those who can't, on Saturday, May 31st, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. The Kankakee County Historical Society is requesting street closure of South 8th Avenue from West Water Street to West Charles Street to host the Rhubarb Festival on Sunday, May 18th, 2025, from 7:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Item C, Kankakee Area Community Connector, is requesting permission to rent the Farmers' Market gazebo area to host Kankakee Day on Saturday, June 21st, 2025, from 12:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m., with a rain date of Sunday, June 22nd, 2025. Item D, the Juneteenth Celebration Community Council, is requesting permission to host their Freedom Festival Parade and also street closure of East Birch Street from North Hobby Avenue to North Cottage Avenue to host the Freedom Festival on Saturday, June 21st, 2025, from 8:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. Item E, Kankakee Development Corporation, is requesting street closure of the 1 and 200 blocks of South Skyler Avenue to host the Kankakee Farmers' Market every Saturday beginning May 3rd, 2025, through October 25th, 2025, from 6:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. Item F, Kankakee Development Corporation, is requesting street closure of the 1 and 200 blocks of South Skyler Avenue to host coffee, cars, and cigars on Sunday, May 18th, 2025, and Sunday, September 28th, 2025, from 8:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. Item G, Kankakee Development Corporation, is requesting street closure of the 1 and 200 blocks of South Skyler Avenue to host Cruisin' the Square on Saturday, May 3rd, June 7th, July 5th, August 2nd, September 6th, and October 4th, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. And item H, Kankakee Development Corporation, is requesting street closure of North Skyler Avenue between East Court Street and East Oak Street to host the Sunset Stroll, North Skyler, on Friday, May 30th, 2025, from 4:00 p.m. until 12:00 a.m.
Okay. I think we have some changes that we want to do there. First, we have a motion on the floor to combine items 8A through 8H. We have a first and a second. Is there any questions regarding the combination of the items? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Abstain.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Polly.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Now, is there a motion to combine, or is there a motion to approve items 8A through 8H?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Rude. Is there a second?
Second, I have requested amendments on items E, F, and G. Those are all requests by the Kankakee Development Corporation for closure of the 100 and 200 blocks of South Skyler for three different events. We confirm with KDC that they only need the 200 block closed for all three of those events, not the 100 blocks, so we want to limit that just to the 200 block being closed of those three events.
So we'll remove the 100 block from item 8E, 8F, and 8G.
Correct.
Okay. Alderman Rude, you fine with that?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve items 8A through 8H, with 8E, 8F, and 8G, removing the 100 block from the closures. Is there any questions or comments?
Just in regard to that, I thought there was some talk with that Cruisin', in the car shell that they may be utilizing the 100 block at some point. I'm not aware of that. Okay. We can, we can change that if necessary. Yeah, KDC said it wasn't in the plans. Okay. At this point.
Is there any other questions? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye, but I abstain from article D. No, that's, yeah, D.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Polly.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, and I've got your abstention, Alderwoman.
The communications for street closures are approved. We'll move on to item nine, standing committees. At this time, we will begin with item 9A.
Building and Code Committee for Thursday, February 20th, 2025.
Alderwoman Malone Marshall?
Thank you, Mayor. We held our Building and Code Enforcement Committee meeting on February 20th, 2025. We did have a quorum. We discussed the, we went over our meeting minutes from January 16th, and they were approved by the committee. We also approved the bills for January in the amount of $647.81. In the director's report, it was noted that there were 58 permits purchased in January, totaling $14,885.33. Under old business, we discussed the animal control contract. Director Nelson relayed questions from the committee to Mayor Curtis pertaining to the animal control contract. What are the benefits of having a contract with animal control? With animal control, with the animal control bill, the pet owners for the fees paid by the city? What is the fee schedule for animal pickups? How do animal control charge the animal owners? Mayor Curtis invited Director Laird from the Animal Control to the Code meeting to address the questions. Mayor Curtis also shared that the animal control annual costs have ranged between $23,000 to $25,000, but the contract would cost $35,000. Also, the contract would allow the residents to contact Animal Control directly instead of going through the police or Code Department. Director Laird and the committee had a lengthy discussion addressing these questions and other questions that were raised during the discussion. Director Laird will provide the fee schedule to the committee for their review in the next meeting, and the committee will continue to review the contract for discussion at the next scheduled meeting. Under new business, we had the general discussion, the update on the Code positions. Director Nelson has eight interviews scheduled for two vacant property inspector positions, and Director Nelson and staff are looking forward to the utilization of the new computer software. Officer Nguyen was commended for doing a great job handling camper issues in the city. There was no need for an executive session, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:45 p.m. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Next is item 9B.
Ordinance Committee for Tuesday, February 5th, 2025.
Alderman Marzak?
Thank you. The regular meeting of the ordinance committee was called to order by Chairman Lance Marzak on Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, at 5:34 p.m. We had a quorum. We had no public comment. We had approval of minutes. Motion was made by Lewis, second by Barron. Under old business was a drinking on public property update. Chairman Marzak states we leave this on just for updates. Last month, we had some people staying in buildings after closing hours and hanging out by the dumpster by the Majestic. Marzak deferred to Alderman Barron. Barron states that some of the people that have been complaining have put in some mechanisms in place to deal with the problem and has not had any complaints in the last month. So we'll continue to leave this on for updates. Next, under old business was a synthetic drug prohibition ordinance. This was discussed at the last meeting. It was set aside due to some legislation at the state level that would address this, but it is stalled and was not moving forward. So us moving forward would be in the best interest of the city to pass this. In-house counsel, Don Landwehr, went over the draft for the ordinance with the committee, and Chairman Lance Marzak stated we are not the first community doing this. The committee discussed the penalties and license revocation. It was determined that two violations within 24 months, the license shall be revoked. Also, they will be given 30 days after the passing of this ordinance to be in compliance. Motion was made by Tully, seconded by Lewis, to forward to full city council. Next was a continued discussion on the donation drop-off boxes. Chairman Marzak stated we already had a long discussion on this, and we landed on two boxes per ward and the placement to the back of the building. Unless that is not an option, then the side of the building could be used. This was sent to legal to draft the ordinance and go to full city council. In-house counsel thought it would be best having questions on the size of the box to bring it back for the final draft. The committee discussed the size of the boxes and ended up with two cubic yards being the largest size. Motion to send this to full city council was made by Barron, seconded by Lewis, with the change of Section 8169E, the size being two cubic yards versus four cubic yards. Motion was made by Barron, seconded by Lewis. Under new business was a temporary lease option on city-owned property for hydroponic agriculture and retail shops using containers. Chairman Marzak turned this over to the city planner, Melissa King. She gave a nice presentation on the potential temporary use of shipping containers for use as retail and hydroponic agriculture. Chairman Marzak stated this could be a very interest, it could be very interesting if done right, but if not done right, will look like a bunch of shipping containers around the city. Some uses for containers that I've seen are pretty neat. You can't even tell they're containers. Electric hookup was talked about as well as landscaping. Should it be temporary or permanent? Also murals and signs. Jenny Childs also addressed the committee as to her hydroponic business and wanted to bring it to Kankakee with her being a resident. She would not be selling from the container, so to me, it seemed we had two different things here, the hydroponic agriculture versus retail. I would think she would be able to get it going pretty fast. The committee seemed open to the idea of containers, so we kept it on for discussion. The planning board also to give some input, as well as Economic Community Development Committee, for discussion. This would be a pilot program on city-owned property, not privately-owned property at first, and would be a lease agreement. There was no need for executive session. There was no Alderman questions and concerns.
Next is item 10, report of officers. Item 10A.
City of Kankakee bills in the amount of $1,076,255.46.
We do have an adjustment to the report of officers. We needed to remove check number 83761 as it was made out for the wrong amount. So that number reduced the total amount to approve tonight to $1,052,492.27, and the check will be corrected and placed on the next billing cycle. Is there a motion to approve the report of officers in the amount of $1,052,492.27?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Navarez. So any questions or comments regarding the report of officers?
Aye.
Baron.
Aye, but I abstain as to check 36200 to Baron Hewitt Oil, 36218 to Gordon Electric
Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Supply, 36224 to Joe's Automotive, 36225 to Kankakee Ace Hardware, 36228 to Kankakee
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Ali.
Truck Equipment, 36240 to PSI Construction, each to avoid a potential conflict of interest.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye, but I abstain as to check 83763 to Joe's Automotive, 83764 to Kankakee Ace Hardware,
Thank you.
83784 to Pathfinder, 83795 to Skyler Avenue Properties, 3893 to Pigish Engineering,
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
The report of officers for Environmental Services Utility are approved.
1479 to Kankakee Ace Hardware, 1480 to Kankakee Valley Construction, and 1481 to Pigish Engineering
Next is item 11, unfinished business. We have none tonight. We'll move on to item 12, new business.
to avoid a potential conflict of interest.
First up is item 12A.
Thank you. Malone Marshall.
Norden's declaring certain property surplus of the city of Kankakee and the Kankakee Police
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Department and authorizing the sale thereof.
Report of officers for the city of Kankakee are approved. Chief Kidwall, you want to just give a brief description? Next is item 10B.
Environmental Services Utility Bills in the amount of $336,272.11.
Yes, we have a Western snowplow that came from our 2,000 GMC 2,500 pickup truck that
Is there a motion to approve the report of officers for ESU?
is no longer usable for us, so we talked to DPW, they can't use it, so we're requesting
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Prude. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Jones.
to surplus it.
So any questions or comments? Is there a motion to suspend the rules that will allow for this ordinance to pass Roll call.
Jones.
Aye. tonight?
Noble.
So moved.
Aye.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones.
Johnson.
Aye.
Is there a second?
Cobb's.
Second.
Aye.
Second from Alderman Jones.
Lewis.
Any questions or comments?
Aye.
Navarez.
Roll call.
Aye.
Jones. Marzak.
Aye.
Aye.
Noble. Ali.
Aye.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Ali.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye, but I abstain as to check 36200 to Baron Hewitt Oil, 36218 to Gordon Electric Supply, 36224 to Joe's Automotive, 36225 to Kankakee Ace Hardware, 36228 to Kankakee Truck Equipment, 36240 to PSI Construction, each to avoid a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
The report of officers for Environmental Services Utility are approved. Next is item 11, unfinished business. We have none tonight. We'll move on to item 12, new business. First up is item 12A.
Norden's declaring certain property surplus of the city of Kankakee and the Kankakee Police Department and authorizing the sale thereof.
Chief Kidwall, you want to just give a brief description?
Yes, we have a Western snowplow that came from our 2,000 GMC 2,500 pickup truck that is no longer usable for us, so we talked to DPW, they can't use it, so we're requesting to surplus it.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that will allow for this ordinance to pass tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones. Is, was that, I'm sorry, Alderman Marzak? Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Jones. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Ali.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye. We have a motion from Alderman Marzak. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Jones. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Ali.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a first from Alderwoman Malone Marshall, a second from Alderman Prude. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Ali.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Is there a second? A second from Alderman Prude. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Ali.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that will allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones.
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Noble. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Ali.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones. Is there a second? A second from Alderwoman Noble. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Ali.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next is item 12D.
An ordinance amending chapter 34 of the municipal code of the city of Kankakee, sewer rates, section 34-104.1.2, and solid waste, garbage, and rubbish, section 34-107.2, and chapter 34, division 300 rates.
As we get into this, this is the only thing that we are amending here is we have our sewer rates. Nothing else is being amended in this ordinance. That expires April 30. This is a two-year renewal. What is, we did change a couple of things here. We have changed in here, you'll see what's called Class 1 domestic water user and Class 2 identified user. We went to those names for a couple of reasons. Class 1 domestical user is your homes, your commercial retails, your businesses, things like that. Your domestic, or your Class 2 identified industry user are your typical large industries that have surcharges associated with them, or they have different permitting with them. In the past, they were all lumped together, and a lot of times, we had the exact same charges across the board. The previous one, I believe, was six and a half, seven, and seven and a half percent increases. We wanted to try to do as little as we could for the residential customers in the city of Kankakee. You'll see that this is a two-year commitment. We have a 2% increase on the Class 1 users, that's your retail, commercial, office, and residential users. We've got a lot of costs that are obviously hovering north of 4% and 5%. Union contracts are north of 2. We tried to get it down as low as we could there. This went through the ESU committee. We're pretty happy that it's much lower than we've had in probably 10 to 15 years or so. And then the other charges on BODs, suspended solids, fats, oils, and grease, things like that, you'll see those are raised up quite significantly because we've been having problems with our industry users that are causing problems with the list stations and things, and this is going to help them with the capital replacement plans on that. So this was put together in reference to help the residential, the residents, really, to keep their sewer costs as low as possible. When we get in, we, this year, we'll get into the garbage and rubbish later on this year because that'll be, a contract expires at the end of the year. So we'll have them. If there's any questions, we'll answer those, but we'll start with, is there a motion to suspend the rules for passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman O'Brien. Is there a second?
A second, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Cobb's. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
No.
Ali.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, one nay.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman O'Brien. Is there a second?
A second, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Cobb's. Any questions or comments?
Mayor, I would just like to say.
Alderman Jones.
Thank you so much. As I'm looking at it, this was really, really, I know it was tough. I know nobody likes increases of nothing, but to know what we're battling as a city and, you know, what's going on on a national level, this, I'm looking at it, and I'm saying this is really good. It protected the citizen as well as, as well as the people that are doing business with it from the company standpoint, from corporates, because you don't want to run everybody out of town, but I just wanted to say, you know, it got paid a little bit more, but we need what we need to make sure everybody gets paid and we can keep what we need in the city functioning at a high level. So I just wanted, as I looked at it, I wanted to say, it was impressive.
Other questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
No.
Ali.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, one nay.
Ordinance is approved. Next is item 12E.
An ordinance approving a development agreement with Limestone Town Homes LLC.
We're going to have this for first reading only tonight. There was still some more discussion. I went to Economic Development Committee, was recommended to full city council last week with the developer. There were still some clarifications and some questions regarding some timelines. We went back and forth on those through Friday afternoon. We do not have those resolved at this time, so we're going to have this on for first reading tonight, and then if those can get resolved in the next two weeks, we'll keep council abreast if there's any changes. If there is changes, we'll bring those to you, and it could potentially be a second reading in the next meeting, or it could go back to Economic Development Committee for review again. So for first reading only tonight.
Yep.
Next is item 12F, appointments.
We have Citizens Advisory Board. We have First Ward, Roderick Sessions. Are we doing them together?
I would, is there any, does anybody have a problem doing these all together?
No.
Okay, we'll do these all together.
Okay, great. First Ward, Roderick Sessions; Second Ward, Jimena Ramirez; Third Ward, Pat Coy; Fourth Ward, Paige Schaefer; Fifth Ward, Doug Young; Sixth Ward, Zelma Evans; Seventh Ward, Nettie Williams.
So this is, this has gone through the CDA Committee, has been approved and recommended by the CDA Committee to the full city council, and so this would take effect fairly quickly here. So I'm looking for a motion to, for council consent on the following appointments that were just read for the seven wards.
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Noble. Questions or comments? Seeing none? Roll call?
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Holly.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
The appointments are approved. Was brought to my attention by Alderman Barron. He did it. I actually had to look it up. As he told me earlier, our second ward appointee is probably one of our... Maybe the youngest person to ever serve on the board in the city. Or not ever. I don't want to say ever. I don't know that. But definitely now one of our youngest members to serve on any of our boards or commissions. So as you said, it was Gen Z.
First member of Gen Z to serve on the city board or commission.
Okay. I had... I actually had you being... In '56, I had to look up what Gen Z meant these days.
I'll look it up later.
I just knew it was younger than me, so... Congratulations, everyone, and thank you for stepping up and serving the city of Kankakee. Next is item 13, motions and resolutions. We do not have it listed there, but we do have a potential resolution. But we do... Before that, we need to... We do have a need for an executive session. Under RIL CS 122C2, Union Contracts, Item 1. That is...
Can I read that? A resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement with the Office and Professional Employees International Union.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
I have a motion from Alderman Marzak. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Alderman Johnson. Roll call?
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Holly.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
We are now in executive session.
Okay. We are, um, is there a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
A motion from Alderman Marzak, is there a second?
Second.
Second from?
Sixth Ward.[1235.83][1235.83](Laughter).
It's high.[1237.83][1237.83](Laughter).
We'll go with ladies. Alderwoman Johnson.
That's teamwork there.
That's how we work. Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
We do have a quorum. We do have action resolving from executive session, so item sixteen one.
A resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement with the Office and Professional Employees International Union.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution, uh, is there a motion to approve the resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Malone Marshall, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Prue. Questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prue?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
The collective bargaining agreement is approved. At this point, we'll move on to city council member comments.
Mayor.
Alderman Prue?
Yes, I am extremely happy to announce the, um, coming opening of our community resource healing center, um, through Live Free. Um, our actual opening date will be May the third, and I'm personally inviting all the city council and the mayor to be there. You guys will get a formal invitation in the mail, but this center is for mental trauma, um, fighting gun violence, uh, decrimination, and all the things that we need in the city of Kankakee. Um, and again, Live Free is, um, paying the way for this whole center to come to Kankakee. So, uh, again, we're asking you all to come out for our official grand opening on May the third. Um, it'll be from twelve o'clock to three at Second Baptist Church. Thank you.
That's a Saturday, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that next, a week from tonight, Monday the fourteenth, will be the Budget Committee meeting for April. Thank you.
Alderman Jones?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Also, uh, tomorrow at five thirty, public safety here in the chamber, and also I was really excited to see so many people here tonight, uh, from the community to be involved. That was a real good sign. And I wanted to just touch on something, I think I spoke to the mayor and I had seen this on Facebook, and I just want to say it publicly, Kraus and Babcock over on the east side, and the, um, uh, the, uh, where would that be, the subdivision over there, I wanted everybody to know publicly that the roads there do not belong to the city. I know there's been a lot of talking, why don't we repair the roads, and it was going out that we didn't care about that side of town. I just wanted to be real clear tonight, that that is a, uh, private area over there, and we do not maintain the roads in that area. That'd be Babcock and Kraus. So I wanted to say it tonight, uh, publicly, and, um, I believe, is that, is that all we had on that?
Yes. And Route fifty, Route fifty, and, um...
Oh, yes, and Alderwoman Noble also commented, like, Route seventeen fifty, uh, that would be Harrison, Indiana, all of those roads don't belong to us, and a lot of time the public is being a, a real outcry about, uh, you know, roads need to be prepared, but a lot of them are state roads, and we hope to educate everybody. And also, the last piece is, uh, I, I see they go out there, uh, people trying to take people land, and I'm, Lord, I hope, I hope we can be real clear, nobody's trying to take nothing from no one, but AdDOT is working with everybody on HAMAS, and in the back of it, we're trying to put in sound bearers. Now, I was explaining to a couple of our constituents, sound bearers are gonna go along fifty-seven on both sides with the new construction, and some, there will be some encroachment on some land, but nobody's trying to take nobody houses and, and pull them out and all of that. There's a lot being said, but we want people to know, and the state or AdDOT is gonna be in contact with people, and they're gonna take care of it, and you're gonna be rewarded for your land. I want everyone to know that. No, they're not trying to take no one land, but there will be some, uh, some, uh, what we call it, we will, there'll be some easement changing, even all the way on seventeen, so I just wanted to get that out to everyone so that they will know, and, um, we'll keep you updated as the time approaches, 'cause I believe we're about two years out. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other city, uh, city council comments? Okay. Any department head comments? Director King?
Planning board on Tuesday, April fifteenth. We have one case, it's at seventy-one North Chicago, it's a rezoning from R one to R two for an existing duplex.
Any other comments? Okay. Mayor comments, I'll keep them pretty quick, as Director King is really wanting to watch a game right now. She may be, uh, she may be a little bit of a Florida fan tonight, just, uh, I know if it was Michigan State, I'd be, uh, I'd be outta here much quicker, so she'll let you go after, uh, before executive. Um, I just want to say, congratulations to everybody, to the seven Alderpersons and Clerk Gall, um, and so our next meeting, obviously, will be the swearing in, and so looking forward to that, and, uh, um, no, I'm sorry, two meetings, moving it quick, I guess, so, uh, two meetings, and on May, on May fifth, but, um, congratulations, everybody, and it's, uh, I think it's kind of fun and exciting that, uh, things are, you know, all still here as a team and cohesive and can continue, um, moving, uh, at the speed that we've been moving, so. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention real quick, you, I don't know if anybody's got, there was an email that came to me, there's still some, uh, there's some frustration from some people regarding the synthetic drugs, uh, that was passed. Um, I do want to highlight a couple of quick things on that. Um, a lot of regarding the kratom and the Delta eight and Delta nine, the discussion is on that is, uh, we shouldn't ban it, it should just, we should regulate it. Well, the city doesn't regulate, the state of Illinois regulates it. Uh, I was at IML last week, um, there was discussions about that there, reps were not in session, this, uh, but the senate was in session. Uh, they are working at pushing that through committee, uh, that, there's a really good chance that may become a statewide ban. Uh, Indiana bans it right now, Wisconsin bans it, uh, there's discussions about that. You would have to go to Michigan, um, and it were hurting businesses. We're not trying to hurt any businesses, we're actually trying to protect the public. If, the other emails that I got regarding the kratom, it's talking about keeping the levels less than two percent. We've had, um, purchases, not only in Kankakee, Bradley, Bourbonne, and Mantino, I believe, Chief Kidwell, uh, these were all legitimate purchases, and they've been tested by Alavet. We've seen levels four times the amount of what has been even recommended by FDA that's not being regulated. So, um, the concern is, is what is being, the, there is no regulation on that. Um, I expect you'll see other municipalities following suit, there are several others that have done it, um, but if you have any questions, or anybody, any of your constituents have questions, I'd be happy to talk to them, or better yet, Coroner Gessner, or some of the other people that are really experts in this, um, but there's some, the testing results that we're getting back is really scary, of what's being sold. Um, so, with that, I just, like I said, I saw there was some sheet that came to my email about, um, a petition to change that ordinance right now, and I kind of, I, as I responded back to everybody, um, if they can show me something different than what we're seeing, um, that's one thing, but right now, we're seeing that it's underage people, it's targeting and different things, and I believe you, you will find it'll probably come statewide here, there's a really good chance in the spring session here, if not then by the fall session. So I just wanted to speak on that publicly. Uh, that's all I have for tonight, it is now eight fifteen, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion for Alderman Malone Marshall and Alderwoman Noble.[1422.75][1422.75](Laughter). All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Thank you.